Bless each one here today. Be with us in this court as we take this court to you. And may it be pleasing to you. Forgive us of our sins as we forgive those who sinned against us. We ask all these things and thy name, amen.
The United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag, our pledge of allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We're doing pretty good for a small group.
At this time, any person with business before a court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. A formal action can be taken on these items. At this meeting, each speaker will be limited to three minutes. No takers. All right, presentation and discussion with department head, committee boards and courts. Let's go for those.
Looks like people were busy, I guess now.
Yeah, it's gonna slow down a little bit. Looks that way.
Looks like our return from our JP1 is better this time.
Troopers are trooping. Any further discussion? Approval of previous court minutes.
But I didn't see any flaws in this one. How that nobody does that.
Uh, your precinct projects, schedules and stuff.
Judge, we are making a plan. We've got, my guys are making a diagram of the uh, chutes and of the alleyways. They're stamping numbers on them so we know which one to put in first, which one to take out last. We are uh, putting down the equipment that we're using from each precinct. What uh, who will be driving that equipment? We don't, we won't need anybody for the mercy generator. Come on now, guys. We want to make sure that everybody knows their job. They want to make sure that everybody has a written plan in hand. We want to have a meeting prior to uh, a safety meeting. We've got that in our budgets. Have a safety meeting, have a written plan handed to everyone. Everybody's on board, everybody knows what they do. And at any given moment, so that we don't have extra people uh, that might be in the Coliseum in the way. We've got large equipment in there. It's possible it's a safety deal. To where we don't want to have someone injured. Uh, that's almost happened two or three times uh, from what my guys are telling me. And uh, so we're, we're writing that plan. And if the commissioners court will allow that, we, we're gonna have it in where you have a picture of what we're doing, how we want the dirt brought in for the maintainer operator, because he knows how he wants it and what he needs. Uh, some are distancing the, the dumps in which he has to go back and push it back then because it makes it unlevel. Uh, some are putting, telling him to put it where he doesn't need it. He's going around and around because it's an oval area. And so if it's not put in correctly, then he has a lot more work to do. So that we can get it in as efficiently and quickly and safely as possible. Uh, we're gonna do a written plan. I think Commissioner Merritt has some suggestions. I don't know if they're possible or not, but we can certainly look at it. And that's something we'd have to do is go out there and look at it. And I did suggest it to the guys, uh, what you had stated about uh, welding loops or something on to those units and picking them up from the top rather than the bottom. They stated you'd have to carry them in there with a uh, either a backhoe or with a larger skid steer. They said the one that we were using at the Coliseum was too small. It spins because it's over, uh, it's, it's got too much weight on the front. And so it makes unlevel. Uh, and so Jim has said that he would bring his skid steer, which is a lot larger.
He said he had a, I thought you even said your, your loader was bigger and had four clips on it. Or was you talking about skid steer?
No, I'm talking about skid steer.
Okay. Yeah, we, we need something like that.
The macro is got the.
But still, if you would, if you get you a good welder, weld that stuff on the top. It won't hurt the bull, it won't hurt the rider, it won't hurt nothing but the pigeons. And you could just pick that thing up, you wouldn't be spitting across the ground. But first of all, I think, we sit right back here when all four commit uh, foremen was back here. And they made the statement, and it wasn't on this deal, I don't think it would have been something else. That if y'all would just tell us what you want done, we will get it done. There was too many out there that were saying. But on the other hand, if, if you don't have it as a whole, we're gonna run into the same thing. You don't need them all, but these don't want to come and these does. Or that, that old gunner, they need to work that day. These could break the loose. Let them foremen work it out.
And that's why we was wanting a written plan. So that everybody knows the day before the event.
I think, I suggest, that's not, I mean, unless you've got a weekend in there somewhere, a, a day before, uh, you know, it can rain that night. It, it don't, it won't take them foremen thirty minutes to say, okay, man, we gotta rain out, child, we can't do that out there this morning. Let us go, y'all didn't get it, but just a little shower, getting great. Let them work it out. And uh, then we can all stay busy. But first of all, we need to ask these folks out here kindly, so it don't need to be me, as you can, uh, to give us a week notice here some way that we can kind of plan our deal. They're forgetting that all the money that it's taken to move that stuff, to set it up, to get our equipment out there is costing the taxpayers. And, and so we don't need to be out there and do, we need to know what we're gonna do. When we get out there, we get it, we get it done and come on back. But I think our best bet is to leave it in the men's hands and know nothing more about it. And they all know where it goes. I can, I can go out there and show you each piece where it goes right now, and I ain't seen it twice. And they're all smarter than me. So, but it's, it's just, I mean, if you want to write it down, that's great. But uh, it, it's get them to do it and do it right.
That's, that's what we're doing.
And they can see more again where a fellow's finger is than I can in the wrong place, so uh, that's what I think.
The thing about a written plan is anybody can do it regardless if they've been there or not, if they know how, if they can see how it's written in a simple way. And getting the list of equipment, where they're coming from, what equipment's coming from, what precinct, just like the loaders would come from one and three, because we have the largest loaders, we can load faster. And uh, have everybody assigned to that equipment within that week you're talking about, and that's why I have it in writing. And of course, they gave us till the seventh and eighth of April. And now because of the coronavirus, we've got longer period of time than that if we need it. And so with that, they can, everybody knows what their job is. So if you know what your job is, then you don't have any doubts of where you need to be.
Well, my, my only deal with that is, and, and you write it down. You'll write it on anything you want to. I still don't think you need all of them out there.
No, you don't. You just need those that, that are listed to be out there.
Oh, you're gonna list the same ones every time?
No, it'd be, somebody may uh, quit the county, may retire. We'll have to just, we'll just put it as, as we got. You'd have to change the plan, the, the equipment would be the same though.
Well, that's kind of thinking you want the same ones on each, because you said that in that way, they know where it goes.
Well, if you, if you plan the day before, plan the week before, or however, wherever you can do it. And you've got everybody on uh, on the same page as to where they need to be at that time for whatever year you're doing it. So the names will change, but the equipment will be the same. You're gonna need four twelve yards, gonna need a, a, two front end loaders, you're gonna need your motor grader, you're gonna need your skid steer. I mean, you just know exactly what equipment that you need, and everybody knows what they need to run.
Three loaders.
So who's the third loader? So you got one inside the Coliseum and one outside, what's the other one doing?
Two on the outside.
Two on the outside to load the trucks? Did we have that this time?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, no, but we usually do. That runs it in there faster. Gets it in there faster and then the water loader inside.
That's what I'm saying, you got it written down, you don't have to worry about it. Okay.
Just hope you get somebody that, I've been putting it in there.
Fifty years?
Fifty years now.
All right.
If somebody that knows how to put it in there and what you wants to go first. Can't get the loader out of there.
Uh, anything else under?
It's wet.
It's wet, yeah. That's a good thing.
We're waiting for it to try to start.
Any donations, except donations? Senior Senator? Going to work on Alex? And thirteen hundred and twenty dollars. We're gonna go ahead and jump to the West Texas Children's Advocacy Center. How are y'all doing today?
Good, how are you?
Good, good, thank y'all for coming.
Thanks for having us. I gave everyone a brochure. I don't know, do you want to read this or do you need to read it? So we're just here asking you guys to um, to let us do April as Child Abuse Awareness Month. And we help law enforcement and CPS with their investigations with um, physical and sexual abuse, neglect, those kind of things. And we have forensic interviewers that talk with the children so they're not um, being done at the police station. So they come to us and we're more kid friendly and do that. And we do presentations in the school. Good touches, bad touches, we show videos to the older kids about all kinds of abuse and how to let someone know and who to talk to, and if there was any, anything that they needed to tell someone.
Yeah, I'll read it, I'll read it. Now, this is a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month for April twenty twenty. Whereas more than sixty thousand cases of child abuse and neglect were confirmed in Texas during two thousand nineteen. And whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility and finding solutions depends on involvement among all people. And whereas effective child abuse intervention programs succeed because of partnerships among a variety of entities, including but not limited to schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, child protective services, prosecution agencies, medical professionals, mental health professionals, children's advocacy centers, and other community-based nonprofit organizations. And whereas everyone in the community should become more aware of child abuse prevention and consider helping parents raise their children in a safe nurturing environment as well as supporting local professionals dedicated to meeting the needs of child abuse victims. Therefore, the Scurry County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty as Child Abuse Awareness Month. And Scurry County and, in Scurry County, and urge all citizens to work together to reduce child abuse and neglect and to significantly, significantly improve the response of our community when child, child abusers, when child abuse occurs in the months and years ahead. Maybe the seventeenth of March. I think that that's something that we should do for sure.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution for the West Texas Children's Advocacy Center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get this signed. All right, court to discuss and consider possible action concerning an order authorizing the issuance of Scurry County Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series twenty twenty, authorizing certain parameters for the bonds, authorizing the county judge and/or the county auditor to approve the terms thereof, authorizing the redemption of certain outstanding obligations and certain other procedures and provisions related thereto. Vince, you wanna make that more understandable for everybody?
I'll do my best, Judge. Judge Commissioners, good morning. For the record, my name is Vince Viallo with Specialized Public Finance. I've got presentations on the refunding. Is there anyone here that does not want to get a copy of the presentation? I thought I'd offer that first. Okay, all right. Yes, sir. Judge Commissioners, y'all called back in December. This issue was discussed some before the court. At that time, we would hold off on doing anything. Uh, what we're doing right now, we're revisiting the possibility of refinancing the Series twenty thirteen financing the county did. And the only reason that we're looking at trying to refinance that at this time is because interest rates are lower now than what we were able to get on the twenty thirteen issue. So I've handed out some information related to this. Uh, on page one, there are some bullet points I want to go over here with the court and hopefully answer any questions y'all may have about this issue. So Standard and Poor's, the agency that rates the county as far as the credit rating agency. Uh, at that time, we were concerned that we were gonna be getting a downgrade from S and P. After conversations with S and P, a conference call with the judge, the county auditor, and Standard and Poor's analysts, giving them a lot of information and working through this, Standard and Poor's came back to the county and they actually confirmed our existing rating of A plus and lifted the negative outlook and changed that to stable. So even given the, the finances that we've seen the last couple of years in the county with the fund balance drawdowns, uh, we were able to work with S and P and get that A plus rating confirmed, get that negative outlook dropped, and we have gone from a negative outlook to a stable outlook. So we're now sitting at A plus stable. So I think I want to offer congratulations to the county on that. That could not have worked out any better. Getting back to refinancing the Series twenty thirteen issue, I've handed out some information to the court on page one. Uh, bottom half of the page relates to this. On the Series twenty thirteen issue under refunded bonds, that box on the, about the middle of the page on the left side, what we're looking is refinancing the maturities twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-four. So those will be the bonds that we're looking at refinancing. Those bonds are outstanding and interest rates varying from three percent to three point three seven five percent. So that's the existing interest rate on those twenty thirteen bonds right now. Uh, now if you drop down to this estimated true interest cost or T I C, uh, below that a couple of lines, you'll see a two point five nine three. This is the interest rate that we think we could achieve on the refinancing, that or better, hopefully. Uh, and that's where we get our savings. Going from the existing interest rates of three and three point three seven five down to an interest rate of two point five nine percent or better, uh, that difference in the interest rate is how we get the savings. So we'd be issuing new refunding bonds at that two point five nine percent or better, taking the money from that refunding bond issue and paying off the old thirteens at the higher interest rate. Does that make sense to everyone? So that's how that works basically. What we think we can achieve by way of savings and doing this is over on the right side of the page. We're looking about thirty, call it thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand dollars a year, uh, net to the county, round numbers, overall savings over five hundred thousand. And again, I think this is a very conservative estimate. I think we're gonna be able to beat this. Uh, but we're not gonna have that interest rate locked in until such time as we go to the marketplace and lock that interest rate in. On page two. And gentlemen, what we're doing this morning is the court is considering what's called a parameters order. What a parameters order is, it gives us the ability, once it's approved by the court, to go out and get this transaction done at some future date. But in order for that transaction to be accomplished, we have to meet or exceed these parameters. And these parameters relate to the savings that we can get on the refunding bonds. So we have to get a transaction that is at this level or better before we can get that transaction accomplished in the marketplace. Now, once we get that transaction done, the county still has the ability to say yes or no. Because within this parameters order, it designates what are called the pricing officers. In this case, it will be the judge and Angela. And once we get this transaction done at this level or better, we have to call the judge and Angela up and say, okay, we've got it done and here's our savings. And they will have final yes or no that it's gonna be a done deal. So the county will have final say, once we can meet or exceed this transaction by virtue of the savings of what we're showing here, if that makes sense. So that's what we're doing now is we're considering the parameters order. These are the parameters we're laying out within that order. On page three is a chart that shows tax exempt interest rates for the last ten years. Uh, this chart could go back to the fifties, the forties. We're not gonna see rates this low. So if you look over on the far right side of that chart, that's where the current market is, as far as interest rates go. So we're in a very low interest rate market right now. The only difficult situation in the marketplace right now is liquidity, or what we call liquidity. There just aren't that many transactions being done right now because the market is so volatile. Uh, I think this is gonna clear up in a few weeks. And what this parameters order will do is it tees us up and gets us in a position to where in a few weeks, we can accomplish, accomplish this if we want to. So that's, that's what we're looking at doing here. Uh, the last page, page four, is a tentative proposed timeline. And this timeline can change very easily. What we're doing on March seventeenth is we're considering the parameters order, giving us authorization to proceed on this. Uh, we'll get, again, the county rated by S and P. So I expect them to come out and, again, reaffirm that A plus, stable outlook for the county. We're gonna have a competitive sale in accordance with this calendar on April thirtieth. Now, again, that date may change. We're not married to that date, but it's, it's our target date right now. So on April thirtieth, we'd be getting bids in from underwriting firms for the purchase of the refunding bonds. And there'll be a closed bid situation. We'll get all these bids in, they're bidding the interest rate. And we'll tabulate all these bids and we'll figure out what our savings is by having that winning, low interest rate bidder notify the judge and Angela and say, here's where it came out. And at that time, they will say yes or no, we've got a transaction. If they say yes, if our savings exceed what we're looking at here, uh, then we'll award those bonds to the low bidder. And we will appear at a commissioners court after that and let the court know, okay, guys, here's who all the bidders were. Here were their interest rates, and here's the savings that we were able to achieve by doing this. Then we'll close the transaction and pay off the twenty thirteen bonds, basically, is what happens there. Now, we are not extending maturities. We're keeping the same structure as the original twenty thirteen issue. So we're not financing longer. It will be the same payoff like the twenty thirteen is. Uh, all of these savings numbers are net savings to the county after all costs are paid. All costs are contingent upon the county accepting the transaction and all the costs are rolled into the financing itself. So the county will not receive an invoice for any kind of a payment as a result of this refunding issue. Gentlemen, any questions? To equate this in analogy, it's, it's very much like refinancing a mortgage. We're just basically going from a higher interest rate bond issue to a lower interest rate bond issue. We're paying off the higher interest rate.
And we're looking at a million, a, a minimum of a half million dollar savings.
Yeah, and again, I think that's a very conservative estimate.
Especially with what's happened in the recent days.
A couple of things, especially with what's happened uh, in the economy locally. They're not locally, but economy recently. And also with the county able to maintain that A plus rating with a stable outlook and not getting a downgrade. So I think that was a huge positive for us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, thank y'all very much. Also, Gregory from uh, Bickerstaff is here, bond counsel for the county. If y'all have any questions about the legal documents, I turn it over to him.
Yeah, good morning, good morning, court and commissioners. It's very good to meet y'all. My name is Gregory Miller, I'm with Bickerstaff, Pico Valley in Austin. And we're very proud to have served the county for a number of years as y'all's bond counsel. We're excited to help y'all with this important savings project. So I just wanted to make sure I was here to answer any questions y'all might have. Vince, as always, did a great job of y'all, walking y'all through everything. Um, I don't want to bore y'all with the details, but if you have any questions, um, I'm here to answer. Essentially, what happens is y'all sign these and once Vince comes back with some numbers and says that this deal meets the parameters outlined in the order and you approve the, the sale, we will, as bond counsel, walk the documents through the attorney general's approval process and, and get that transaction completed on that end. That's, that's it in a nutshell, so.
Thank you.
Ezra, thank you. I can make motion that we go ahead and put this in motion and uh, order the authorizing of the issuance of the Scurry County Texas Central Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series twenty twenty, and give you the authorization to pull the trigger at the, at the right time.
I'm sorry, court, I should have mentioned, I got a stack of papers for y'all to sign.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. I didn't intentionally not tell you that, but yeah.
Too late now.
There'd be a stack somewhere. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
That was well played, you waited to.
All right, court to discuss and, which one are we gonna be next? Let's talk about this tax payment agreement with Canyon Wind Farm real quick. Let's go ahead and get that one out of the way.
Judges, do you recall, we had a, an amendment with uh, Canyon Wind, which is backed by Ira. I think y'all all got in your boxes a copy of their progress update. They are progressing, um, but they're not gonna make the end of twenty, twenty twenty, they're not gonna finish by that time. And that was the end, the deadline for their tax payment agreement to get started. The requesting that be pushed back to twenty twenty-one. I don't have the final agreement yet, otherwise I would have included it, but we're working on that. The progress update, they are, as I understand it, doing more sites for their locations and the geological survey is building the roads. And I think it said in there they're gonna get started uh, to be in third, fourth quarter of twenty twenty, actually starting up with the tower. They have changed names, they're going to another LLC, which is not uncommon. Those assets have been transferred. And so they're asking that the tax payment be transferred to that new LLC. I don't have the objection to it, it's something we see all the time with their financing. But they ask, they couldn't be here today because of medical issues. They ask if, if I would present this to you, our recommendation is if you want to continue that tax payment agreement and the payments in lieu of taxes like we have previously agreed with them, they would go ahead and agree to that extension. And hopefully they'll be finished mid-year of next year with their, their first phase down there. And they're still planning on building the second phase from what I understand.
And this still, that's the four percent inflation rate that we've asked others to do as well.
Yes, when we negotiated that dollar amount, that payment in lieu, we accelerated that to that four percent.
We gotta, gotta do it to so many people, and I'm glad that our county attorney made it clear and still I'm not sure it is, but after seeing Facebook last night and people stating that the courthouse was closed, which one of our employees here set them straight on that. But uh, people think that we make these hundred percent tax abatements without any money coming into the coffers for ten years, and it's just not true. We, we do get payments in lieu of taxes for ten years, and we get quite a bit of money. So much money per kil- megawatt. And so uh, just want to make that abundantly clear that we're not giving away the ship. We're actually making money. We're actually making money with this. And so with that, I would make a motion that we allow the extension of the tax abatement for Canyon Wind Farming, let them change the name of whatever they are going to.
I should have a revised document the next four, five days for the judge to sign, if y'all will allow.
And so, and allow you to sign the document.
All right, Gregory.
I'm standing.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's discuss and consider vendor locations in the park.
Ray, this is easy one. We have not had a policy for vendors, food vendors in the park, not during 4th of July or something like that, people that's come in set up. We need, I think we need to designate an area. And the area I would ask that we designate would be on the east side of the swimming pool parking lot. For that reason, if we had ballgames and they had concession stands, we don't want the vendors, drive-by vendor, to be in competition with them close. So there, it would work. On the 4th of July, we have a carnival there, so no outside vendors could be there. During the car show, they park all the trailers. So it would keep a, a drive-by vendor from competing with people that are paying for spaces in the park. So I, my recommendation is we set up that area on the east side of the swimming pool parking lot. We have water and electric hookups there as the place for what I'd call a drive-by vendor. Any questions?
Do you have that meeting?
No, but it's getting more, more and more. So that's why we never had a policy, we had a problem. But I just don't want those vendors to compete with people that are paying for a make change spot to be there.
Have you maybe asked them if they wanted to just rent a spot? Do you, are there not enough spots to go around, or?
Well, the problem we had, we had a arts and craft show, and vendors, food vendors paid for a spot right there by the armory. And we had a drive-by park over by the skate park. And the lady was very nice. I asked her to at least move around the corner, out of sight. But with talking with Mike, we don't have, I really didn't have a leg to stand on to do that. So talked with Mike and said we needed a policy. Because if somebody wanted to park right across, I really couldn't, don't have a leg to move.
So with that policy, can we charge them like a rental spot?
You could do, in my opinion, is you could do whichever you prefer. If somebody's going to come in and use that park for private business for the day, you could say, we're not going to allow that unless you pay a fee of X number of dollars per day. And then you could designate the location. But we have to be consistent. Can't free on one, not free on one. Now, the 4th of July, those things, we have agreements with the chamber or car shows where they essentially rent the park. And so they're in charge of the vendors for that day. So they could exclude them. But like Larry said, and you also need to decide if you're going to allow food vendors to rent a space there by the armory when something's going on in the armory. Are you also going to allow those other vendors that don't pay to use that east end for free or not? But right now, without the being a commissioner's court determination and a policy, the park didn't really have a legal leg to stand on to ask them to leave and enforce that, or ask them to move and enforce that. And as we get more and more of these food trucks, it's just going to get worse.
I would think anytime we have an event, that they ought to pay just like everybody else.
They, in the past, they have, except this, this one instance where we realized we needed.
So you just need to be able to direct them with policies. So you're gonna, are you gonna write this policy, or Mike's gonna write the policy?
I think it'd be easy, I can write it. We have water and electric, but most of these people are self-contained. It would be if y'all, if they hook up to us, of course, we'd want a fee, but it, what do y'all want if somebody is self-contained and pulls up there?
I think you charge those that are hooking up, well, are those in the park, are there? They're hooking up to your power, aren't they? Those that are in, renting the spaces in the park?
They don't rent them from us, that.
Well, from the.
Yeah, the chamber and car show.
But you're not charging them a fee?
No, and they're not. The ones, the ones at the arts and craft shows are self, are self-contained.
I mean. Well, let's get it over and start charging a fee for power, because that's.
The, the cha, it's just been that way forever.
Well, let's change it. I love change. I mean, it just don't seem right.
Also, what you're, what you're recommending or suggesting is when the chamber, when the county has an agreement, let's just assume 4th of July because it's easy. Has an agreement with the chamber, that that day, the chamber is in charge of the entire park. And they can collect rentals off of it, and how they choose to divide their booth space. So in lieu of the county then charging each vendor for electricity or water, et cetera, it would probably be easier to say for the chamber for your rental would be X. And then they can take that from their vendor. So we just have one person to collect from the chamber. Having said that, what is that dollar amount going to be? What's it going to do for the chamber celebration? I don't know, but that's the park's problem is there, there hasn't been any direction from the commissioners, because that's just always the way we've done it. And so they need a policy that they can say, here is the county policy.
And like the carnival, they pay for a fee to be there. They pay our fee to us. But the vendors, mom and pop vendors, or whoever down in the, the body of the park, has always been understanding that the county put that deal.
As a community event.
Yeah. But even if anybody that's arts and crafts or whatever, they, they pay a fee for those buildings. And that entails paying for power.
Yes, like the armory, yeah, somebody pays to use that building. And the vendors we've had out front are not hooked up to anything. The person putting on the craft show hires the food vendors they want. But they're not hooked up to our stuff.
I mean, if there were a nominal fee where the county actually got something for the power that's being allowed to be used, if you're going to hook up to it.
Now, and let me be clear, are you talking about inside the armory or?
I'm talking about, well, I'm just saying that you're charging the arm, the people that rent the armory or whatever, used to be the barn as well. They're being charged, so what's the difference in that? Somebody using, utilizing for profit, using out in the park for, where the chamber is allowing those spots, I mean, renting those spots to those people. Is, is there, I guess one way to look at it, is there more, is there more vendors wanting in the park than there are spaces?
No.
Are we losing because of the chamber charging too much?
No, no.
Are we having about the same amount of vendors every year? So $10 wouldn't break anybody per spot for power that we're providing for that vendor. I wouldn't think, I mean, that's, let's discuss it.
I think that you would have to then visit the agreement between the chamber and the county. Because currently, the chamber doesn't pay the county anything. They collect all of that, we don't get any.
And so we're changing policies. And so right now's the time to talk about, will the chamber collect $500, whatever that case may be, per day for power?
I don't know what the chambers call, charges for a spot.
So would you, would you be willing to talk to them and bring it back to the court as to what they're doing?
Or, yeah, or they can come talk, but I.
Do you have any idea what kind of money you're talking about? Probably don't, do you?
They charge $10 for everybody hooked up to our water and electricity, $200.
That's what he's paying.
That's what you would.
That's what we would charge. If we got $10 from every vendor out there.
You'd get $200.
I get $200. Car show, we might get 50. I hate the suggestion, I suggest we leave it alone.
And that's fine, if we're always talking about budgets and about costs that we have, then we, we want to cut everything as much as possible, and then you have an opportunity to help, and we don't want to do it.
Yeah, well, you know, chamber, this is a fundraiser for the chamber and the car show. They, all the money they make, they give back to schools and youth programs and that, they.
Oh, I'm not trying to hurt the chamber. The chamber does great things.
Oh, absolutely, and I know you're not, I'm just thinking it.
You're thinking more of the pass-through.
Exactly.
From the vendor to.
Are you talking about, somebody wanting to rent the east side of that?
I'm talking about a, a drive-by, like the guy that sits up here several days a week. They're gonna, they're gonna start coming to our park. And I want to designate a place for them to be where I, where they wouldn't be in competition with the concession stands at the ball fields. Or concession sta, or in competition with the car show, people that are paying to be in those spots. Put them not out of the way, but during our major events, it's not going to be available.
Does that make sense? You don't have anybody that's wanting to come out there and set up?
We've had.
Nothing out there, I mean.
We've had people talk about it, but this, you've seen in the last two years, this is just getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and we don't have a policy.
Right.
And the policy could be exclude them all unless they're tied to the chamber. If that's what the court wants.
What was the first thing you said when you stood up? This is gonna be easy.
35 years not have a butt kicked.
In light of us not having all the information that we need to make this decision, one way or the other, can we table it?
The other thing, I mean, it kind of goes along with that. I mean, we need to really look at all of our interlocal agreements anyway. So, I mean, because if we are going to look at ways to not, to lessen tax revenue and bring in other revenue, it is something that we do need to look at that. But it's not just with that one, there's many other insurance.
Let's, let's look at all of them, get whatever the chamber, and just get them all and table it for now until all that information can be gathered up and presented to us or given to us, because.
Shooting in the dark.
Well, you are, but by the same token, when it comes, then I'm going to use 4th of July. That is a community event. And do you really want to make somebody mad over $200?
And I don't know, let's find out how much we're, we're paid. It's all on one meter, isn't it? I mean, you, you can see the fluctuation of those that are in, right there in the park area, is there a meter right there that they're using, utilizing for all of them?
That's all on a, most of that stuff is on a master meter on the end of the park, but there are different meters. Now, we can tell you, and we charge the carnival exactly what it take, what that meter rate is, because nobody's ever hooked up to that except them. And the water over there, it's on a meter. But in the park.
There is a way to look that up.
There is?
Yes. We will look that up.
Yeah, probably water, I don't know electricity.
You can see the spike in the electricity.
Yeah, there's a.
And the water, I would say, probably pretty damn minimal.
Electricity, it may be.
Yeah, I don't know.
Listen, let's get all the information before we do anything.
Okay.
My opinion.
And just take no action, all right?
Thank you, Larry.
Can't, can't we go ahead and make this policy, though, for the drive-bys that he's talking about? Because that wouldn't have anything to do with the rest of it. That way, he can stop it going forward.
Yeah, well, we can.
So as soon as you get with Mike, make sure you've got your policy correct, the way that, that the statutes would allow?
Only just a tad bit of guidance from the court. Is the court willing to limit third-party vendors to that area over by the swimming pool? We can come up with some description. On non-large event days, I'll come up with some word, but is that, is that your pleasure?
That's what I would think.
Okay, then with that direction, I can draft something, or we can draft something and get you something to look at.
Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Thank you for making it easy.
You can become our spokesman, or sometimes.
All right, discuss and consider accepting a donation from the land, a donation of land from the Edna Young Arnett Estate. So in your packet, there's that scurry cab top page, and then a map, two maps attached to it. What this is, is the water wells at it, Harmley. Two water wells, correct, they're both on one piece of property. The issue is that the water wells are supposed to be fenced in. And instead of fencing one well in and then the other well in, looking at fencing in the whole property. I got ahold of the gentleman, John Muntz, who's the in care of on this. This was his mother-in-law's property. He said he is willing to do a quitclaim deed on this property so that we could have it and fence it in before Harmley War.
Awesome.
So if y'all are willing to do something like that, we could.
Do you want approval right now, or do you want to wait till you get the deed in hand at the end?
Like to have approval and go ahead and move forward with that.
So I made a motion that we accept the property donated to the county for the water wells. And allow the other side.
And you, are you going to have charade?
Probably.
We'll do the, we'll fix the deed, once we get an accurate property description. I haven't had time to look at it yet, to see if there is one, but once we get the property description, little description, we can.
Renewal information of the Affordable Care Act Reporting and Tracking Service.
This is from Texas Association of Counties for our health insurance. Several years ago, Obama instituted the arts program, which is Affordable Care Act Reporting and Tracking Service. Every payroll, I have to send information to TAC, and they track it for us. And then at the end of the year, they do these reports that are listed in this first paragraph, the 1094C and the 1095, which I just handed out like last week. And it is still, we're trying to, hopefully it will go away the end of this year. But until then, we have to continue doing that reporting. And TAC offers it to us at no cost right now, so it's awesome. And I beg you to please renew this.
I'd like a motion to re, re, the Affordable Reporting and Tracking Service.
And I do need initials of the judge on the pages, and then on the very last page, I need the autograph and the date. And then I'll send it back to TAC.
Is this one fine?
Yes.
All right, line item transfer from which one?
There are only two line item transfers. The first one is for Commissioner Precinct 3, into equipment under $1,000 for 503, out of fuel and oil. He purchased a new computer for the yard. And then Harmley Water Works, operating supplies, 1,500, out of repairs, needed to purchase supplies.
Cause he's had to move some money around because he's got a lot that he's been taking care of. The cost of those, the cleaning really kind of went down.
No, that's it.
Yeah, it's going really smooth. Uh, county's pay.
County's pay was 931,739,03.
Motion to put it through.
Thank you. All on paper. Thank you, everybody.